Okay, you ready? Just let me know when you're ready. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session meeting for Tuesday, October 29th, 2024. The time right now is 5:30 PM. I'm going to go ahead and ask that our clerk please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmembers present and establishing the quorum are councilmembers Fulcher, Beaumont, Hamford, Walker, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we did hear at an earlier meeting that Councilmember Gamble would not be here this evening, so unless there's objection, we will consider his absence as excused. Seeing no objection, his absence is excused. Councilmember Fisher did not make a -- we haven't heard from him as being out, correct? Okay. So I turn to council. We will announce when he comes into the chambers. Should he do that, since he's already notified staff that there's a chance he may not be here this evening, absent him actually coming in, we'll consider his absence as excused. Any objection to that? Okay. So unless he comes here to this evening, his absence is excused. All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask that everybody please stand and --
Thank you. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, our nation, our God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is a limited opportunity for people to speak to the council during this council meeting. Person to the rules of procedure, spoken public comment is limited to in-person comment only and must comply with the standards set forth in council rules. Comments are limited to three minutes. Information on where to send written comments is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. And as that is noted, if your comments do hit the three-minute mark, any additional comments can certainly be emailed to cityclerk@monroewa.gov. That's up on the screen there. And as stated at an earlier meeting, we ask that you address the mayor and the council and not the community behind you when you're speaking. And also, there's no cheering or clapping or other interruptions during the meeting. And I think that will suffice for right now. Thank you. So we do have a sign-in sheet. I'm going to go ahead and call on the first person. And I do ask your forgiveness as I may have challenges reading people's names. The first person that I have who has signed up to speak is Debbie, is it Pascar? Please come on up. And I ask that you please state your name and association with the city for the record, and then we'll start the three minutes.
Thank you. Deborah Paskin. I live on Strawberry Lane in Monroe, Washington. And I just want to say good evening. I'm going to be reading off my phone because I get a little nervous, but thank you. Before I begin, I know you said not to address the back, but I would just like whoever lives on Strawberry Lane, if you can raise your hand to show who is here, because this directly affects what I'm going to be speaking about. I would like to first address the notification process of the significant change to our community. The postcard that was sent out was not hard, was not only hard to read, but arrived in a manner that was not enough time to organize my voice or my concerns. As you can tell, I'm stumbling over my words. I received this postcard on Saturday, November 26th. The lack of transparency and communication is not only unprofessional, but really disrespectful to the residents who have made this neighborhood their home. The proposed change will significantly increase traffic congestion. The addition of apartment complexes and medical buildings not only double, but perhaps triple traffic. Our current road infrastructure in our neighborhood has not been designed for this proposed population or vehicle density. In addition, the potential for increased crime rates is always a concern. With denser population, there is a statistical correlation suggesting a rise in crime, which would compromise the safety of our community, especially our children and our elderly. What makes our community and our neighborhood different from many others is the strong sense of family and community. When my family moved here two years ago, neighbors didn't just pass by. They welcomed us with open arms. They brought us homemade gifts, offered help, and made us feel truly at home. When I had my third baby boy last year, the community rallied around us, brought us gift cards, casseroles, and clothing for the little one. This isn't just a neighborhood, it's a family where everyone looks out for each other. We understand the need for progress, but it should not be at the cost of our community's well-being. We ask that you reconsider the zoning plan to ensure it aligns with our community's capabilities and needs, improve communication with residents for all future projects, providing clear, accessible information well in advance, and also consider alternative locations for development. Look into lands and lots in the Monroe area that might have been more suitable for new apartment complexes, medical buildings, and whatever else might be in plan that will not impact existing communities and that we will not be disruptive. Disturb, excuse me. Our community is more, our neighborhood is more than a location. It is a community where people have invested their lives and formed bonds. Let's ensure any changes made enhances rather than diminishes the quality of life in our neighborhood and in Monroe. Thank you for your attention, and I urge you to consider these points.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you. Next person who signed up to speak is Paul Victor. Paul Victor, please come forward. Good evening and thank you for coming. Again, your name and your association with the city.
My name is Paul Victor, and I've been a resident here since probably 1991, so it's been a while.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And moreover, I career up on the hill. Anyway, my concern is, as I went to the city and I got one of these sheets of paper that's explaining everything, I and others are in the purple section. I don't know what that means. The paper didn't address the, my concerns. I didn't really understand it. But basically, I'm really concerned about my property taxes. I want a fixed income. Really don't want to move. I love my home, I love the neighborhood. The only way I want to leave is feet-first. And I understand the need for a dynamic, vibrant, growing community. We all have limitations, and I'm concerned about property values and the tax implications. And bottom line is, as a private citizen, I'd like to say, I'd rather be in a positive situation with everybody. That's my preference. But if we can't, all of you are elected officials, and we can vote you out anytime. I'd rather keep good, capable people here, and we all work together. But if we can't, then, but anyway, my concerns mirror pretty much everybody else's. I wish there was a better explanation of what being in the purple section meant and the implications thereof. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Next person who signed up to speak is Paul, is it Packhurst? Parkers? Thank you. We've got two Pauls in a row.
My name's Paul Parkers. I live on 181st and Strawberry Lane. Mine is more of a statement, is I'd like to question, but I know you don't answer questions. Is it gonna, I mean, what is the value of a petition full of names to put a stop to this and/or lawyers? Is that a value? And that's probably what it may, may not take. That's about all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who signed up to speak is Taylor Rooney. Taylor Rooney, please come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name's Taylor Rooney. I'm a local resident, 15010180th Street. I have southeast right over here in Strawberry Lane. Again, addressing the zoning issue. I was glad to see you finally let us know about this. Seems pretty late in the process. I've done what homework I can in the small amount of time that I've had. Couple of things I would like to address. First off, this is coming from you, the city. I'm reading off the seat, but determination of significance and request for comments on scope supplemental environmental impact statement.
Taylor, I'm going to have to pause you for just a second. Don't worry about your time. Jody, can you hit the timer? It's okay. You're getting a little, couple extra seconds there. Go ahead, Taylor.
Thank you. So determination by the city, in your own words, City Monroe's lead agency has determined this proposal may have significance, adverse impacts on the environment. Farther into this document, of course, we get into the under no action alternative, the city would still have the capacity of 1,468 new housing units, which is 975 in the city, 289 units out of the city, URA, your terms, above the 19 to 35 housing target projection established in the Snohomish County Buildable Lands Report. So we're going above and beyond to displace our neighborhood zoning. Again, these are in your own words. Couple other issues. You have multiple conflicting plans up currently. The 35, the 44. They are, have different information in them. There doesn't seem to be much explanation of timeframes beyond the fact that we're now adopting that in the next meeting, which you have here is November 12th. I know you're discussing it tonight, despite the fact this says November 12th. It doesn't have any explanation of the tax implications of rezoning. It doesn't get into the implications of us as homeowners, what it would mean to be a non-conforming property with the homes we have purchased. You know, we worked hard to have our homes and to redesignate us as non-conforming usage. I just bought two years ago. This wasn't on my radar. I'm sorry, I didn't know, but like, this is our livelihood, this is our home. The late notice and the fact that you're already adopting this despite the fact that your own documents say this is a poor idea is not giving much relief to those of us feeling represented by our community at large here. I do appreciate that we've had a little bit of community building in our neighborhood because I've met some neighbors I hadn't before. I'm also concerned with the lack of alternatives. There's a lot of different ways we can go about this. Where's Plan B, Plan C, Plan D? Also, I'm trying to compose myself. It just, you really took us all by surprise with this.
And Taylor, that's the extent of your comments. Thank you very much. Next person that we have who signed up to speak this evening is Roberto Magara? Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. And then I have, I think it's Delcinta? Storman, come on up.
Thank you. I live on 188th Place Southeast in the Strawberry Lane area. I've been there for two years. I bought this home because the community is safe. I have, as a single woman who works long hours, I feel safe there when I come home at midnight from my nursing job. I have a lot of questions, and I'm hoping that this council will answer and address our concerns and questions appropriately, in a timely fashion, before you vote on this process. Because again, as he said, we didn't buy our homes to have them taken out from underneath. I have spent $60,000 in two years to make improvements to my home from the time I bought it. There's still a couple of things I'd like to do, and if you make us non-conforming, I don't think I'll be able to, because I won't be able to get permits to do an outside patio. And that is not fair to us as homeowners. I'm also concerned that if I try to sell my home, it's going to be worth crap, because you're going to put all these other businesses in here. Traffic is going to be horrendous. Where are you going to park all these cars? That's my biggest question. Do you guys realize there is no parking in that area? The streets are narrow, the kids play on the streets, we have older people that walk on the streets. You put that much traffic into that neighborhood, someone's going to get killed by a car accident. Pedestrian versus car, guaranteed, because it cannot tolerate the amount of traffic that you're talking about with one main entrance out of that community. And that is just not fair to us. These cards, have you guys tried to read what you sent to us? It's not readable. I can't tell what you're saying, what all these color codes are. Even with a magnifying glass, it's blurry. You guys need to communicate more appropriately and more clearly, and if you're, I got two cards. I don't know how many others might have gotten two cards, but I got two cards on the same day. So that tells me that you had cards ready to go out before, I just didn't send it out and then sent out another batch. But again, did you guys even look at what you sent out? I don't think you did, because if you did, you wouldn't have sent this out to your community and the people that live here and pay for taxes, pay for, pay for the town and live here and support our businesses. You wouldn't have done that.
Thank you. That's the end of our signup list. If there's anybody else who would like to speak this evening, just go ahead and put your hand up. Come on up. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hi. I'm Catherine Castillo. I live in Strawberry Lane. My husband and I are retired. Our daughter lives with us with an autistic son. We bought this home 15 years ago. We've been residents of Monroe back to the 80s, but we bought this home as our place to live until we die. And then my children would have this home because it's a safe place for my autistic grandson. By changing the code to this multiple use, you are effectively setting in motion, replacing our homes, taking away our homes that we own, the land we own. You have a viable choice. I read the letter that was sent to all of you. There is a good place for it that does not disrupt a neighborhood that has been around since the 60s. We've watched the high rises go up, taking away green space. We all have good yards. We all have space for our children to play, our grandchildren to play, our great-grandchildren to play. Our neighborhood gets very little traffic. Our kids can ride their bikes. We do know each other, even the ones we don't know by name, we know because of recognition. I've watched this happen in Redmond. These are high-density buildings, and the only place that I can see any jobs are small coffee and eating establishments. Those aren't jobs that will sustain anyone and put them in a home. You're destroying what we have built. You shouldn't have the right to do that. I don't think you would like it if it was done to you. We have widows who live in their homes and can afford to stay there. You raise our taxes. At some point, you will push us out of this neighborhood. That's wrong. That should be what you're thinking of. These jobs you're creating by pushing all that in, that's wrong. Take away the green space, have people living in properties that are unaffordable for most of us. Where are we supposed to go? Any place we have to leave and go to has also ridden, risen to the point that people can't afford it. We talk about the homeless population, but that's exactly what you are adding to. I'm really upset that you're even considering it.
Catherine, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I saw another hand up. Come on up.
Okay. So my name's Dunson Peliquin. This is my third week in a row coming and speaking. I'm coming from the infamous triangle. So I wrote down what I wanted to say tonight, so I apologize for no eye contact. Okay. So I think at this point, you have heard from my neighborhood and where I stand with the upzoning debate. It doesn't make sense for our neighborhood, and we don't want it. I want to be very clear, though. Although this upzoning isn't guaranteeing that we will have apartments and stores underneath them coming to our neighborhood, but upzoning our area is just a gateway for that to happen in the future. It is a gateway for builders to come knocking on our doors. Only five lots, though. There's only five lots in the neighborhood that they'd be interested in. They'd be knocking on those five doors, applying pressure. If, and if this happens in the neighborhood which we currently live in, as you've heard tonight, is very safe and quiet, it will turn into something that's not that and something it's never been. The potential danger of upzoning my neighborhood will impact me and my neighbors' lifestyles, causing some of us to be pushed out due to financial reasons and some of us to just simply leave, as we didn't sign up to live in a neighborhood that you're trying to turn into something that's not ours. Longtime Monroe citizens are now questioning the city's motives, and we have to decide if this is the right place for us. I ask each of you to take some time to think about why you chose to join the city council and serve the great people of Monroe. When being sworn into public office, you were taken in the duty to represent the public. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how you can make decisions that directly impact the public without properly communicating with the said public. Take the last few meetings into account, where just a very small sample of the people affected are coming and speaking out against this. One last thing I would like to say is to ask each of you to put yourselves into my shoes. I am just one of the affected here. My husband is a firefighter and works 48-hour shifts, which means I'm home alone protecting and providing for my family each week while he's away. Changing our neighborhood, upzoning it with the potential of what happens, as you've heard, when traffic upticks, so does crime and other things. This without a doubt will make me personally feel unsafe, and we will be forced with no choice but to leave this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Other hints? Come on up. Thanks.
We're going to need to get a longer, longer arm there for now. Yeah, no doubt, right? Okay. So my name is Chris Peliquin, also speaking about the triangle over here at Strawberry Lane. I've shown up the last couple of weeks. A lot of these people that are in this room is because I communicated with them. But I'm not going to talk about the concerns that I have as far as that we've already covered in the last couple of weeks. I'm going to talk about what this community means to me. So I've had the privilege of living in that neighborhood right there for 30-plus years. So it used to be my parents' house, and when they got to the point where they wanted to retire and move closer to family down in Oregon, they offered it to me first because they knew that it would provide a safe community for me and my growing family as I age. It holds a special place in my heart because over the last three decades, I have watched this community grow and evolve. My neighbors have been there, a lot of my neighbors have been there just as long as I have, and truly become like family. Together, we've celebrated milestones, like my sister getting married and my neighbors attending that wedding. Support each other in times of need, shared countless laughter-filled moments in our backyards and driveways. This neighborhood is more than just a collection of houses. It's a vibrant community that nurtures connection. It's a place where neighbors look out for one another, sharing joy, sorrows, and everything in between. These relationships have enriched our lives and make our neighborhood feel like a home. As a member of this community, I believe that it is essential for us to continue fostering this spirit, spirit together, of spirit of togetherness. We must support each other, one another, and work collaboratively to make, ensure our neighborhood remains safe, welcoming, and vibrant place for everyone now and in the future. What you're proposing to do, I have a concern with. It will jeopardize the future of our community. I urge you to consider alternative options, providing jobs for the future of Monroe. I know is a necessity, but there are other places to look. And please do not tear apart this. This community that I have grown up in, that I went to school with, a lot of these kids, there's a couple of members back here, one of them in particular, that used, his kid used to babysit me. She now lives down the street. So this is a community that I have grown up in. A lot of, I've played in many of these guys' yards back here, and what you're proposing is going to start to disassemble everything that has grown over the last 30 years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Yeah, come on up.
My name is Roland Schwartz, and I've lived there probably longer than anybody has because last Saturday was 62 years I've lived there. There was no 522 there. Most of the houses weren't there, and you could look clear to the highway and you could see hands, these big silos and everything. And wife and I raised four children there, and we liked the neighborhood, and I probably got the largest piece of land. It was a full acre until 522 come across, and now it's registered at nine tenths of an acre. We liked the neighborhood. It's a good neighborhood. It's quiet. One good thing that 522 did, it cut off 182nd, so they couldn't come all the way across. And before that happened, we used to get guys coming from town there, and when they got to the end of the street there, they couldn't make the turn and wound up in the cornfield or whatnot. So what I hear you want to do here, I do not approve, I don't like, because it'll mess up our nice, white neighborhood, and I like our neighbors, our good neighbors. Thank you. And by the way, parting thought, I'm too old to move.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? All right. Again, just like I said before, I appreciate everybody coming out. I know that it's hard. This is part of the process, is to get information out to the public, make certain you have a chance to come in and share your thoughts and everything. And so, thank you very much for coming. There will be more on the agenda this evening where they're going to talk about the comprehensive plan, so feel free to stick around. And again, thank you for coming. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be on the piece of paper under that paper. Unfinished business. This is item 5.1, second reading and adoption of four proposed code amendments to the Monroe Municipal Code, MMC Chapter 2222, Downtown Commercial Zoning District, and MMC Chapter 22.12, definitions with Planner Wright. And we're going to road teach you. There you go. You needed to give me more to read so that we could move the tables. Right now, right? All right. Go ahead.
Good evening. Wait for my presentation, just a moment.
You're supposed to clap twice.
Yeah. All right. So I met with you two weeks ago for the public hearing for the downtown code amendments, and I'm back tonight for a second hearing and just to talk a little bit more about some concerns that were had, that was mentioned by council and go through them. So we're starting out with the map of the downtown area, just so we can remember what that looks like. The yellow is downtown, the residential neighborhood area, and then the orange on the right is the east downtown, sorry, east downtown neighborhood. And then darker orange is historic main, and the hashed area is the promenade. As you remember, these are the uses that we were looking at. We were looking to add banquet, conference, event facilities, major as a conditional use in historic main and east downtown, and then as a minor use in, conditionally, in the residential neighborhood. So I'm just going to focus on those three. Those are the ones that we were looking to have as a conditional use. Just quickly, the definitions that we're proposing for the major banquet facility is for 50, an occupancy load of 50 people or greater. And then the minor definition was for 49 people or fewer. So staff went through pros and cons of requiring these to be conditional uses, and I just wanted to, that was where our questions lied last time. The big one is flexibility and review, and so that just gives staff a little bit more time to look at the potential impacts that these uses might have in those
more time to look at the potential impacts that these uses might have in those areas. It also provides the building department, um, an opportunity for conversation over occupancy. A lot of times, we, we don't even know if somebody's planning on moving a business in until they're already in and signed a lease, and so this, um, this provides that opportunity. It also provides the opportunity for public notice. So if you're moving an event facility in, in one of these neighborhoods, people within 300 feet, the property owners within 300 feet will get notified and be able to provide comment to the hearing examiner, where we can then mitigate negative impacts. Something to think about is that in the downtown, we do not have parking requirements for commercial uses, but we can look at other, um, potential negative impacts like noise or disturbances. And then we were looking at, well, and also the public benefit, which is, it's just, it helps support the goals of the downtown plan while balancing the needs of the businesses and residents. And as mentioned in our last meeting, there are cons with that, and that means that a new business owner would need to go through another land use process, and that takes time. So I just wanted to go through each one here. So these are the banquet event facilities, minor, so less than 49 people, 49 people or less. We were just looking to add them as a conditional use in, next slide, in the light yellow area, and that is the residential neighborhood. So, um, this is the only minor use that we were looking to make conditional, and I just wanted to show here, and this is what the residential neighborhood is like. So, um, someone, let's say they're gonna convert one of these homes to an event space of 49 people or less, you might see, as we click through here, that this is, you know, low-impact area, and in, that bringing a use like this in, they would, likely would like to provide some comment. And then the next two were banquet event, conference event facilities, major. This is 50 people or greater, and in this situation, the, the building department may require additional upgrades for accessibility, um, upgraded bathrooms, access, things like that. So, in, on the map, these are proposed in the east downtown, so it's the orange at the right, and also in Historic Main, which is in the center, not the promenade, but the, the larger orange in the center. And in East Downtown is, um, has a little bit more high-intense use than the residential neighborhood that we were just looking at. There are some businesses throughout, um, there's some, um, almost industrial uses throughout, so it is a little bit more high-intense, and then Historic Main. So the thought is that having these banquet and event centers just really giving us and the neighborhood the ability to make public comments, so we can site-specific, look at those, um, impacts that they will have to the neighborhood. Did I answer your questions from last, the last time? Um, is there anything more that?
Can you, uh, is there another slide?
One more, sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
And tonight, we're looking at, yeah, sorry. Tonight, we are looking, staff is recommending the first motion, which is to, um, adopt ordinance 002-2024 as is. We did provide you with an alternative action, and that is to replace all of the Ps on that page, permitted, sorry, all the Cs on that page, conditional uses, with permitted.
Okay. Uh, so I turn to the council. Um, the staff has walked through why they feel that the conditional use permits might be appropriate. As noted, when you get up to 50 or more, um, there are concerns about wanting to make certain that the public is notified of those sorts of uses coming in, uh, or being considered by the city. Uh, so it gives the public an opportunity to come in and give public comment and express their concerns that maybe we're not considering at this point in time, uh, because each use can be unique. So you're talking about parking, you're talking about noise, you're talking about hours of operation, um, and, and things along those lines. So that's why a conditional use would be recommended for, um, for, um, event centers that would be 50 or more. Um, the second motion there, uh, as staff noted, would essentially not have those as conditional uses and would treat major and minor, uh, without having a conditional use for the major. Is that correct?
Yeah, it would, it would, um, allow them outright, and so there would not be the opportunity for, for public input or for us to apply additional conditions.
Yep. So that would be no public comment, no hearing examiner, no receiving, uh, input and things like that. So, um, I turn to the council. Do you have any questions, um, or is there a motion? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you. So I just want to commend you on this packet. The pros and cons, really easy to understand, really, really appreciated the photographs to show the neighborhoods, that really helped me in sifting through a lot of this, and very well done. Appreciate it. A couple of questions. Can you help me understand a block party use? What would need to happen? So, we're talking about maybe we might have 49 people at a block party that's in a residential community, so how would that be handled? Exactly as it is now, or does this affect that kind of a gathering in a neighborhood?
This does not affect that kind of gathering in a neighborhood. This is just for, um, a business that wants to open.
Got it.
In the neighborhood.
Okay. And secondly, we had talked a little bit about how, um, the conditional use permit involving additional fees, application process, public notice, hearings, all of that. That is something that still concerns me a bit, just in terms of businesses, uh, and impact on them and their costs already. Uh, can you run me through again how long that process would take and how much that fee might be for a business?
It's a great question. I don't have the fee with me. It, I, it is...
I think it's right around $2,000, all said and done.
You know, a lot of that fee is a fee that we pay the hearing examiner for, for their time.
Okay.
Um, and it can take, with noticing, it can take two or three months.
Okay.
Councilmember Beaumont, I'd like to ask a follow-up question. You've got the floor, but I'd like to ask a follow-up. Um, and that is, uh, conditional use permits, uh, since we do a fee, fee waiver program frequently on an annual basis, those would not be subject to that.
Doesn't apply to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. Um, again, just a concern that, you know, we're trying to attract business and events and things like that, and a lot of business owners, this might be a real hardship for them. Just trying to, uh, create an open, uh, welcoming environment for them to have events downtown, and I think that might be tough. But, uh, otherwise, just wanted to commend you again on the packet. Very well done and easy to understand. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I have two questions. One of them actually just came from, um, Councilmember Beaumont's question. Um, I just wanna make sure that the conditional use permit, the fee that we were just talking about, that may be, um, maybe a holdup for some businesses, that would be for new, major, uh, businesses that are going to have a major use for a banquet facility, for them to come and locate in this area, they would have to apply for a conditional permit. Is that correct?
Yes, but I just want to clarify. All right. It is for the Cs that you see on the screen. So for major uses, 49, or sorry, 50, occupancy of 50 or greater in Historic Main and in East Downtown, and then it's also in that residential neighborhood zone, it's the smaller uses, so 49 and less, all three of those would need to go through. If this is, if this is what's adopted, they would all need to go through a conditional use permit process. However, in Historic Main and in the East Downtown, those mi, minor facilities are permitted outright.
Okay. The, uh, the business that we discussed or the situation a few weeks ago, where would this current option leave them in that situation?
They fall under Historic Main Minor, and so they would be permitted.
Okay.
No conditional use.
All right. Wonderful. So, to my understanding, the businesses that currently exist in the area, it, it looks like there, there would not be any necessity for them to apply for a permit all of a sudden for them to continue to comply?
If you're, if you're talking, if your, if your question was about the, the woman that's, that spoke, um, they would come in with their business license after adoption, and so they would be permitted per this table, and they would not need to apply for a conditional use permit. There is an event center in the Historic Main that I believe falls under Major, but they are existing.
Okay.
They would not need to apply for a conditional use permit.
That's wonderful. Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Go back to the two proposals you want us to vote on.
We'd like you to consider voting on, yes.
So I understand, proposal number one, they're not penalize anybody as we've spoken here, and, uh, option number two does what? Does it?
So, neither, yet.
So, option number one does not penalize anyone that's currently in business. If, if we could go, I, I think the, the slide that we had before, I can answer the question about number two.
Jody, you're gonna wanna bookmark that.
Sorry about that. So, what option number two does, if you look, if you look at the top line, where it, it has, in the Historic Main and, uh, East Downtown, where it has the C, so that's conditional use, it would change those two Cs to a P, which would make it permitted outright. And, and that's the, what we've been talking about, the difference between, uh, having to go through a conditional use process versus not having to. So that, those, that is, that's the difference between motion one and, and motion two.
Well, motion one is the top line, motion two is the second line.
CPP.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from councilmembers or a motion? Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead. And then, Councilmember...
Goodness. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I was actually gonna make a motion, so, um, but first, let me just, did you go straight to it?
Oh, you did bookmark that. Nice. Oh, okay.
Oh. All right. I move to adopt ordinance 002/2024, amending Chapter 22.22 MMC Downtown Commercial Zoning District. Amending Chapter 22.12 MMC Definitions Updating ALLOWED USES WITHIN THE DOWNTOWN COMMERCIAL ZONING DISTRICT, UPDATING THE DOWNTOWN COMMERCIAL ZONING DISTRICT MAP FOR CLARIFICATION. ESTABLISHING REQUIRED BUSINESS HOURS FOR CERTAIN CONDITIONALLY ALLOWED USES WITHIN THE DOWNTOWN COMMERCIAL ZONING DISTRICT, CREATING DEFINITIONS FOR NEW USES, PROVIDING FOR SEVERABILITY, AND ESTABLISHING AN EFFECTIVE DATE.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fulcher, a second from Councilmember Beaumont, which is requested action, motion, item number one, shown on the screen. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember, uh, Fulcher, you made the motion. Uh, would you like to speak to your motion?
I like it.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Councilmember Hanford, and then Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, just wanna make sure that I have a complete understanding of this, so, um, Councilmember Beaumont, you brought up events, and I was just wondering if you could clarify what business you were talking about before, or what type of business you were speaking to just earlier?
I'll allow it right now.
Okay. I was curious about, um, you know, the 49-50 line in terms of, um, for instance, Take the Next Step just had a gathering on Friday night, and I don't know how many people were there, but I'm just trying to get a sense of, um, you know, what we're talking about in terms of our downtown areas, and trying to relieve the, the businesses that may wanna come in and have events, because I feel we really need that downtown, to bring people into downtown. Uh, so I'm trying to ease their burden a bit, and so I was just, you know, and there's also, um, a person who has spoken to us a couple of times that has a business, um, and is seeking relief, and wanna make sure that she is able to continue to operate her business. So that's one of the businesses I was referring to as well. And just trying to ease the burden and get some wonderful things going on downtown, um, is kind of more what I was focusing on. That makes sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So, just, if you could help me just to understand, so hypothetical, the event center that is downtown that you said is pre-existing, so they don't need, they wouldn't need any permits because they're already allowed, but the building next door, the old Thrive Building, if for some reason someone wanted to turn that into an event center, then they would have to apply, because that would be bigger than 50, because it's of the size, right? So they would have to apply and go through the, um, whatever, the, the C, right? The conditional permit. Is that correct?
So, that would of course depend upon the number of people, correct?
Right. If they, if, if they were over 50, and my guess is they would be over 50, because it's based on square footage, so they would have to go through a conditional use process.
Okay, thanks. And then, so like the, um, Tyon Main Street, if they wanted to, uh, have a wedding there, where there's gonna be, say, 100 people, what, what happens?
So, first, that's the promenade, so we're not, we're not asking to expand event spaces into the promenade. Um, however, the easiest way to look at this is what is your business license? Are you an event, are you, are you an event space? Or are you, and that's what we're looking at, people who are applying for a business license for an event space. It, the city is not dictating whether or not Tyon Main can hold an event in their business because they are a restaurant, and they're permitted as a restaurant.
Okay.
And so, if the building up above, if the people up above that aren't in the promenade want to have a Girl Scout meeting, and there's gonna be 51 people, what happens?
So, it would be for a business license for someone that's having an event space, and let's say that business rents the space to a Girl Scout troop. Um, in, in that situation, we would have to look at the occupancy and determine whether they're major or minor for that business license.
So it's just to, to make it an official event space? So if I live upstairs and I just wanna say, "You can have the, the meeting at my house, I'm not gonna rent it to you, I just, you're welcome, I'll come here," no problem?
Right. Yeah, we're, we're just looking at those business licenses of the uses that move into, to a rental space, or to a space.
Okay. I think you've answered my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Um, I, I, I'm gonna vote against this, but I wanna clarify that it's not because the permit, um, I, I think that when it comes to the conditional use permit idea, I think this is great. I think that it is actually probably what the community would be in favor of, um, because the conditional use permit is actually a tool that we have at our disposal where it gives the community that, um, opportunity to give feedback. I think so often you see on social media, um, the idea that the city allowed this Starbucks, this fifth Starbucks to come into town, when in reality, that's not, that's not necessarily our authority. Um, we, we don't pick and choose what retailers come in. What a conditional use permit in this case would allow is, and, and really quick, I'll go back to my roller derby comment from... and really quick, I'll go back to my roller derby comment from the other day. I still want to make my roller, roller rink. If I bought the Thrive Building and I came in to start a roller rink, the major use would be for rollerblading or roller skating. And if I had league meetings there on the weekends, the minor use would be league meetings. In that case, yeah, major and minor. Versus if I came in and I said, this is going to be a wedding venue, and that's its primary purpose, it would need to go through a conditional use permit, which means I would need to apply for that permit from the city. The public would be noticed. They could come weigh in to the hearing examiner, and a decision could be made then. So I think that with, with that being said, I think this ordinance is the right thing for the businesses that we've, or the situations that we've discussed so far. I think it does help with communication to the community and gives them an opportunity to weigh in on what they want to see down there because the alternative ordinance that's up there would mean that if I wanted to have my roller rink or a wedding venue, I could come in, pick a space, open a wedding venue because it'd be permitted, and then all of a sudden, people in the downtown would have 100 cars parked there, or let's say 100 cars, and they'd go, why did the city allow this? So conditional, in my opinion, is better. Voting against it only because membership organizations are not on there, and I still think that we should allow that. I think that I was in the minority on that last go around, but I appreciate it, and thank you guys for putting the work into it.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Note that this is an ordinance. Ordinance requires four votes to pass. So it's not a majority of the members present, like a motion, but it is a majority of the body, so that would be four votes. I'm going to go ahead, and all those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes 4-1 with Councilmember Walker voting against. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is councilmember reports. I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Walker.
I attended the Take the Next Step banquet dinner with Councilmember Hanford and City Administrator Knight on Saturday or Friday, it was a Friday. And that went really well. I think it was awesome seeing the community out there, and it raised a lot of money for an organization that does a lot of good for the youth in our community. The situation that we're in right now with the zoning considerations, I just guess I want to express to the community that these positions that we can sometimes find ourselves in on council or anyone, on council, I'll say, it's very difficult because we have a responsibility to try to meet these Growth Management Act requirements while at the same time balancing that with wanting to protect the spirit of Monroe. I think all of us have lived in Monroe forever. This isn't really one of those situations where you have people who've got a prerogative to see big buildings go up in the city. That's not really how it is at all. The situation we find ourselves in is we get assigned the comprehensive plan structure, and we have to say, we can accommodate X amount of population in the future. Where could we do that? It's very difficult, and I'm glad that the folks who showed up tonight are here and have been here. I would echo something that the mayor said the other day, which is the process is working. The fact that you guys are in here giving comment is the process working because this isn't a foregone conclusion. A decision hasn't been made yet. This is still something that we are considering as a council. It's just before us. This is basically, it's something that hasn't been voted on. So the fact that you're here is great because it helps us in our consideration. So sorry for the monologue, but I want you guys to know that we are all hearing you, and we're considering it. I know that the staff is as well. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
Thank you. I love following that because that is so well stated, and I don't think I could have done that on my own, so thank you, Jake. Yeah, I just, I want to thank you again, everyone, for being here tonight. It really does mean a lot. If I could have my way, I would have a rolling calendar of all neighborhoods being able to come and just kind of use their three minutes. So me being given a moment now to see my councilmember report. Can't really think of anything that's, you know, really councilmember-y except for, thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I concur with what you just did, Councilmember Walker and Fulcher. It's very good to hear from the community, and I appreciate you all being here. And it sounds like a wonderful neighborhood. My wife and I volunteered at the Take the Next Step Dinner, and was so happy to get the email that the other day that they raised $40,000 total. So their biggest fundraiser ever, so that was great. And it was so good to get a tour of the city hall this afternoon. The team is doing a great job. Keep up the good work. So excited to get that roof on and get it all finished up.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beaumont.
I concur. Thank you all for coming. It's tough to work all day and then say, hey, I'm going to go to city council and go sit and listen. And thank you all for sharing. This is very, very important that you come and talk to us. And we listen and we hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
With the interest of time and boredom for y'all over here, I concur with my councilmember colleagues. Thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing your concern. It helps us think about what we need to do. Appreciate you being here. Other than that, I got to see the city hall. It's going to be a very nice upgrade for the town and the staff that has to work in, so. Can't wait to see the finished product.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. We're now going to go to City Administrator Report under 7.7.1. City Administrator Report Extended Agenda. Administrator Knight.
Thank you, Mayor, the Union Council. The November 5th meeting, Public Safety Committee.
Should I put your words?
I would like to hear your words, too. And I bet the rest of the public would like me here, too. Is that better? Much better. All right, well, thank you. Good evening. Looking forward on the extended agenda for November 5th, which is Election Day, we will be canceling both the Public Safety Committee meeting and the regular city council study session for that night. Looking forward then to November 12th, we will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting that evening. We will be reviewing Board and Commission Rules of Procedure and the 2025 legislative priorities. For the city council's business meeting, we will have a public hearing, the final public hearing on the 2025-2026 biennial budget. And the ordinance for adopting property tax, we will be having first reading. For the Monroe 2044 Comprehensive Plan and citywide zoning updates, we'll be having public hearings on those as well. Under the consent agenda, we have the Public Defender Contract, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Recommendations, a resolution to continue the recruitment incentive policy, a resolution on the city's whistleblower policy, award bid authorization and contract with Cola Curcio Brothers for the 147th Street Signal Project, and then Snohomish Regional Drug Task Force ILA with Chief Jolly, and then approval of the supplemental biosolids hauling contract with John Landy. Under new business, we have the Property Tax Ordinance First Reading, the Ordinance for the Biennial Budget First Reading, and a Bex Place Change of Scope Request, and then Department Reports.
Any questions from the council on the extended agenda on 11/12?
All right, for the City Administrator Report, just a reminder that the November 19th Finance and HR Committee meeting will be canceled, but we will be having our Transportation Benefit District meeting that night, which will start at 6:00 PM. And we need all of the district board members to attend that meeting.
Okay. Any questions for City Administrator? Thanks. All right, thank you very much. Mayor's report, there's a proclamation in your packets in there for Veterans Day. Also, Monroe this week is there in your packets. I do thank everybody who came to take a tour of the municipal campus this afternoon. Staff, I really appreciate, Jake, if you can share with your team how much I appreciate the work that they're doing to manage that project and effectuate it. So thank you very much. And I think that's all that I have that I'm going to report this evening. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item 8.1, Monroe 2044 Review Final Drafts of Chapters 4. Transportation, 7, Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and Trails. 8, Capital Facilities and Associated Appendices, with our Planning Manager, Turtlow. Good evening.
Thank you. As always, I have some comments to put in.
There we go. Hello?
Can you go ahead and restate what you just said for the record? Thank you.
Yes, before we get started on the formal presentation, I will have some comments. First, Jody, can you bring Alex forward? And I believe Attorney Lell is also available if needed, if the council has questions tonight. Okay, it's been two weeks. As I told you at the end, it would start happening pretty quickly. But I do want to address some of the comments that have been coming in for the last two weeks, specifically from the Strawberry Lane neighborhood. This process actually, if you recall, began last April. There were articles in The Herald, there were open houses, we were out in the community. We've really been trying to reach out to the residents in Monroe to ask for their questions. The postcards that they received in the mail was saying, please come, provide your comments at the public hearing on November 12. And here's where you can get more information about this project. So it's, I, like you, am very grateful that you all showed up, and the postcard worked because they're here. I also want to acknowledge Susan Davis. If I could give out a participation award, she's been to basically every planning commission, community advisory committee, council meeting, and open house. So if you're looking for a knowledge source, she is your person. She has actually read the entire document and the environmental impact statement. So understanding she has a relation in the Strawberry Hill or Strawberry Lane neighborhood, I hope she's sharing that information. So tonight, again, after, because of the comments that have come in the last two weeks, I am going to first go through the primary reason I am here this evening, which is to give you an overview of the draft Transportation, Parks, and Capital Facility chapters. And then we have left time for conversation, more conversation for you to go through how we came to the proposal for the future land use map. Alex Doobie is also going to assist me walking through how we got here, the analysis that we have done, and just provide you an opportunity to ask more questions. Let's see here. I would make a request that the council just follows its, actually, adopted rules of procedure. If you want to make changes, I would encourage you to voice opinions tonight, but wait for the public hearing. You really need to consider everything from the state law to Pigeonstown Regional Council to all of the public engagement that we have collected over the last year. Look at the comments from the, excuse me, the findings, conclusions, and recommendation from the planning commission, the comments we've received from state agencies, and then also, very importantly, the testimony that you will be receiving on November 12. So with that, let's jump in. Next slide. All right, so this also somewhat gets back to where we are in the process. Again, this started in the spring of 2023. There were some land use scenarios that were out there. We asked the public, what do you think? The city council gave us the guidance to move forward with a couple scenarios that were put into the environmental impact statement that was issued back in May. There was a 60-day, or excuse me, a 30-day comment period. We had 11 individuals provide comments on that. Then we went out to the public again. And so I just really wanted to highlight that. But again, the council has to make hard decisions. So tonight, we'll provide more opportunity to discuss the future land use map. Again, your public hearing, which the postcards, sounds like, finally have arrived to all property owners, is on November 12. Then we are not looking for you to have discussion or first reading of ordinance until November 19. And I have two more meetings built in. Again, our goal to be compliant with the Growth Management Act is adoption by the end of this year. So that's what I wanted to provide information on. Scarborough, was there anything else you wanted me to cover? So again, tonight, there's another opportunity to ask questions and have conversation, voice opinion, but please follow your procedures for comp plan amendments. Next slide. We can actually skip this. Next slide. All right, the transportation element. What is provided in your agenda packet is the growth management goal for transportation, and then all of the requirements that we need to do because this is a mandatory element. So that is for your just background information. In your packet, you also have the draft transportation plan. The biggest changes with this comprehensive plan update is we are transitioning from a intersection to corridor and multimodal level of service standard. This information has been brought before you a handful of times this past year from the Transpo. He was helping develop the level of service standard. The assumptions in here are based on the future land use map and the population, housing, and employment allocations that we are trying to achieve by 2044. The other thing on the transportation plan, there's a lot more information about active transportation. Again, this is sidewalks, trails, bike lanes, and that is a requirement of the Growth Management Act. Goals and policies, really, it was just a refresher, an update of what was already adopted in the 2015 plan. That plan, again, had a 20-year horizon, ending in 2023. The way the Growth Management Act works is every 10 years, we have to do another 20-year projection. So that's why the current timeframe is 2044. Any questions?
Questions, council?
Okay. All right, the next chapter is the Parks, Recreation, Open Space, and we are adding Trails with the Trails Master Plan. The Parks Recreation Chapter is really a summary of the PROS Plan, Parks Recreation Open Space Plan that you all adopted in 2022. Again, the major change is incorporating the Trails Master Plan, which is an appendix of this comprehensive plan. My understanding is P3 got an overview of the Trails Master Plan last week. This plan also includes the property that the city purchased in the downtown core. That was not only in the PROS Plan, but also in the downtown master plan. In this, there were no updates to the goal and policy statements from the 2022 PROS Plan. And then I do want to also acknowledge that the Trails Master Plan, that was developed in tandem with the transportation plan because, again, the transportation plan now has a multimodal level of service standard. So we're not just looking at movement of cars anymore. Now we're also looking about how complete is your pedestrian network? Do you have a Trails network? Do you have the bicycle facility? The Trails piece of this is an extension of what is included in the transportation plan. They are separate, but coordinated. So I just wanted to remind you how that had worked. Any questions? Okay. And then finally, the Capital Facilities Chapter. This one is really a refresher of all of the facility plans, and it really focuses on the city-owned, managed, and operated facilities, potable water, sanitary sewer, stormwater. stormwater. It also includes information from the school districts, which the city council does not make decisions on that, but we do adopt their capital facility plans by reference as we collect impact fees on their behalf. So one of the appendices for the capital facility plan includes their recently adopted 2020, sorry, give me a second, the 2024 to 2029 capital facility plans. I will note that the Monroe School District is dropping all of their impact fees to zero. So we will be having to update our impact fees, which it will come back to council as it requires ordinance. The Snohomish School District, which, again, the city has a small piece of the Snohomish School District in the northwest corner of our city and urban growth area, they are, it looks like, doing a small increase to all of their impact fees. So more information will be provided when we're asking you to update the impact fees for schools.
Just, I just want to underscore it. So the school district has determined that they do not need to collect any fees on new development to pay for new facilities?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and so, just to let you give a little background on the school district process, the school districts themselves are legal entities. They have to make decisions about their infrastructure, future needs, based on projected student enrollment. They, we give them our population projections, but a lot of the work not only is done by the school district themselves, but they do a lot of coordination with Snohomish County and get their input before the school boards actually take action. Again, we adopt their already adopted plans by reference.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that I've served in Monroe where we have not had impact fees for schools.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify.
You heard correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, they are still struggling with lower enrollment rates.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, please continue.
Yeah, the other piece in the capital facilities plan that I want to bring your attention to is we have updated the municipal facilities piece, that is appendix B. This really is around all of the recent studies for the police department's future needs. So that's primarily, actually, it's the only thing included in the municipal facilities because City Hall is under construction. The only other item in there is, is notice that additional studies will be needed for the full campus, depending on what the police department eventually decides to construct for their needs. It may impact parks or other infrastructure or other departments on the campus. And that is included in the capital improvement plan, which is attachment eight A of the capital or of the comprehensive plan. Yeah, so that last bullet also is kind of important. So the, the capital, every year or every two years when you're adopting a budget, the city does bring you an updated capital improvement plan. It's the new project list. This is a requirement of the Growth Management Act that you have a multi-year financing plan for the infrastructure improvements that are necessary to keep your community running. So those numbers are also based on our future land use projections, people, houses and All right, any questions?
Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
Thanks for the presentation, Kate. Facilities maintenance, so right now I'm thinking about the artificial turf fields at Frylands. I heard about what it would cost to replace that, when it needs to be replaced at the end of its service life. That is going to be a capital facilities cost, right?
That is, and one of the things about the Growth Management Act, your parks, open space and recreation, as well as your transportation improvements, all have to be included in that capital improvement plan. So it's actually in two places.
Awesome. Any other questions so far? Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
Yes, I'd just like to thank you for the report. It's overwhelming to try and read the document, it's that thick. Thank you for taking down to something about that thick. That's helpful to me, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Any other questions so far on the presentation? All right, go ahead and continue. Thank you, councilmembers.
All right, so now we are going to get back into the future land use map. We've been here a couple of times explaining how we got here. But again, just responding to community comments, we wanted to give the council another opportunity to ask questions. This process, to look at the future land use map, there are a beginning point, inputs and outputs. So our beginning point, our beginning point was when you adopted that 2015 comprehensive plan. That is our no action, we're going to keep it, it's lovely. But if we do that, we may have trouble meeting some of our new twenty year projected population, housing and employment needs. And so we start looking at the inputs. US Census, that's a piece of it. Amendments to the Growth Management Act, are they telling us we have to do new things for this update? As I've described, I think that was two weeks ago or four weeks ago, there's a huge emphasis on housing and how not only do we provide housing, but that we are accommodating people who have all different incomes. So that was a major change that we're trying to address with this update. The next thing we need to do is, in addition to our comp plan getting updated, the regional multi-county plan gets updated that we are required to be consistent with. That is the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050. It also includes the regional transportation plan and the economic strategy. And then, so we have the census, and then we have the land use capacity component. We begin with the Buildable Lands Report. Snohomish County is the lead on that, and we take their information, we reassess, is it still accurate? I know you've received a lot of comments that there are concerns that the capacity numbers are overstated, and so that's something that we looked at when we worked with our consulting team. Next slide. All right, so then the final, really important input is public engagement. Again, that's why we were out, we had open houses, we had the open houses, we were at the farmer's market in 2023 and 2024, we were at the block party, the chamber block party, the high school, senior center, et cetera. So collecting, if you had to plan your community, where would you put these additional residents? How would you accommodate jobs? This is what we have to work with and understanding the parameters the city has. So with all that information, we came up with some draft scenarios that were first introduced to the Community Advisory Committee back in September of 23. That information was then presented to the Planning Commission in October, and we brought it to the City Council in November of 23. Again, those scenarios, there were two, that was basically a centers and then looking at a couple of additional out of the box ideas. At the time, we were struggling more to accommodate jobs than we were houses. So then that information was put into the environmental impact statement. We are building on what was done in 2020, or excuse me, 2015. So we took that as our base, and then the major changes the city was considering, we did an additional assessment. So that happens in three stages. The first is the city said, yes, we think there's going to be, we issued a determination of significance, and we reached out and said, what items do you think we need to evaluate? That led into the draft environmental impact statement that was issued in May, again with a thirty day comment period. We did receive comments. Those comments are included in the final environmental impact statement, which looks at a no action and then an action alternative, which was the most extreme of how do we accommodate people, housing and jobs through 2024? That was issued on October eighteenth, and is part of the information that you need to consider when you're making a decision in December. All right, from here, I am going to turn it over to Alex, who is going to walk you through additional steps of how we got to the proposal.
Great, thank you, Kate, and thank you, everybody, for the time tonight. Once again, my name is Alex Doopy, I'm with a firm called MIG, we're the consultant project manager. We're also working with Transpo Group, ESA, who's working with this on the CIPA analysis, and Community Attributes, who worked through some of the economic development goals and policies and analysis with us. So I'm going to step through just kind of the process of how we got here today, talking about some of the elements focused around land use specifically. I know there were several comments specifically around Strawberry Lane. I'll do my best to incorporate those questions into the discussion. But if there are questions, feel free to stop me if you, if you do have something that pops up as we move forward. Kate, can you go to the next slide, please?
Jody.
Oh, Jody. So just as a reminder, and as Kate stepped through kind of the kind of major elements that we, we went through to get to where we are tonight, but, you know, ultimately, you have a 2015 comprehensive plan that lays out your future land use classifications for, for the city. And as Kate mentioned, you know, every ten years, we have to update the comprehensive plan and have to reevaluate these future land use classifications based on a series of employment and housing growth targets. Those growth targets were developed in advance of us beginning the comprehensive plan process. And there is flexibility in how those growth targets can be accommodated. We have to accommodate them. The question is, under what circumstances and how does the city want to be able to focus that growth within, within the Monroe, Monroe community? So that was our essential question, if you will, for, for land use. So we started with a good base. We started with a good base from 2015. There was a lot of great work that had been done, you know, ten years ago. And, you know, from a broader context standpoint, actually, very few changes have been kind of required for us to be able to address those, those targets. Next slide, please. So just to give you, you know, a sense of kind of how this process works, where the county and the city, how they coordinated early on in this process before beginning the comprehensive plan engagement process to develop scenarios, there was a significant amount of work done between the city and the county to be able to align what those, what the potential growth allocation is. And a lot of that is based on the Buildable Lands Report. So Snohomish County steps through a process that they work with all of the jurisdictions within the county to be able to assess specific parcels within the city about how much or if they will grow over time, over the next twenty years. And it is really broken down just in kind of an aggregate standpoint of number of jobs, number of units. And so you can see these maps here, on the left map, the greenish map, that, those are specific parcels that in 2021, for the Buildable Lands Report conclusions, they estimated that a certain number of housing units could be developed on those parcels. And so that's where we get that number in terms of, of capacity from the Buildable Lands Report. The same thing was done for, for employment. That's the map on the right, which is the blue to dark red context, and those are areas where Snohomish County said there is potential for additional growth within these areas for, for employment. And you'll see some of those areas, particularly along Main Street, you know, those are locations that, you know, could accommodate both housing and employment on the same parcels. So we use this information as a foundation, and we actually went back through and started to test to say, okay, does this make sense and is this information still accurate? Next slide, please. So as part of the study that, that we conducted, the component or the element about the Buildable Lands Report is that because it stops in 2021, we know that growth doesn't stop. So as you continue through, you know, 2022, 2023, the city will continue to develop. It'll continue to add housing, it'll continue to add employment. And so one of the first pieces that we did is to look at the Buildable Lands Report, and then to essentially take credit for any of the permitted or constructed projects since the Buildable Lands Report was, was finalized in 2021. And there was a comment early on about that, why are we even doing this? We've already met our housing targets? That's actually true. From a city standpoint, the city has met its housing targets, and there is capacity for that housing within the city. The question is, do you have the right housing to be able to accommodate the specific income brackets that the Department of Commerce now requires for housing? It's not just about detached single family. We also have to think about zero to thirty percent average median income, fifty to eighty. So that capacity is correct, and that you, from an aggregate level, you have capacity for housing units. The challenge is that you don't have the right capacity for the certain types of units that can meet all of the income brackets. And so that was the nut we were essentially trying to crack. The other piece for this, and this also goes with employment, is that we had to be able to figure out where we could accommodate additional employment opportunities. And we did that through a couple ways. One, looking at vacant and redevelopable land in employment-centered areas. We also looked at multifamily areas where we could maybe consider some mixed use. So we would incorporate an employment component to multifamily development within those areas. And so those areas are targeted and focused in how we looked at that employment, but it essentially comes down to where can you build, where are the assumptions for buildability or redevelop, redevelopability? And that really focuses back on the Buildable Lands Report, you know, back in 2021. Next slide. So as, as Kate mentioned, the county planning policies requires us to think about how would we accommodate the growth from both a housing, employment and population standpoint? And so when we look at what those allocations are, you know, that increase from a city standpoint, from, from Monroe standpoint, if you think about it over the course of twenty years, is generally aligned with some of the stuff you've already seen within the city in terms of development. So when we look at some of these new allocations of approximately, you know, twenty-four hundred new jobs that we have to find places for, or twenty-four hundred new housing units, that's the, those are the elements that we need to figure out how to, to deal with. But again, this isn't going to happen tomorrow. This happens over the course of twenty years. So again, we're looking at, you know, 2024 to 2044 as a part of the comprehensive plan. So this growth is incremental. Next slide, please.
Actually, just one, one quick comment on that. There, there was some confusion on the numbers, and I want to clarify, these are the accurate numbers. These were adopted in the Snohomish Countywide Planning Policies. I got a little excited looking at the county's comprehensive plan, and they're actually recommending some changes to the housing and employment numbers in the unincorporated portions of the Monroe urban growth area. The capacity analysis that Alex's team has done does show that we can accommodate the original allocations and/or the county's proposed changes. The county council will not be taking action on their comprehensive plan until December fourth. So we'll, we'll see what happens, but the work that Alex's team has done does show that we can accommodate either option depending on what the council, county council does. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Thank you, Kate. So let's go into the next slide. So, you know, with those, the, the population and employment targets that we need to meet, the first question that we essentially asked the community, and, and we had about fifty people, fifty-five people at a, at a large community workshop, as well as an online survey, as well as pop-up events that the city hosted throughout the summer of 2023, I believe, Kate. We essentially asked the question, you know, what, how, how should we accommodate this growth? And we, we played an exercise, which where people placed pins and other types of kind of tools to be able to show how they would place the growth and how they would meet these targets. We also asked other questions about, you know, for this growth, you know, how should we accommodate it in terms of kind of the form of the city? What are the specific, you know, types of outcomes you would want to see if this growth were to occur? And by and large, by far, the majority of folks said, we want access to services, we want walkability, we want nodes near residential areas so that we can actually access those services from our homes. And we want, you know, an exciting downtown. And so as we started to look at what was being said within the the workshops, within the pop-ups that the city hosted throughout a number of of community events over the summer, through the survey, through some of the heat mapping that the survey gave us on where people wanted to place this growth, we developed a number of scenarios that we started to test about, you know, essentially a series of what-ifs. And so that gets to the the comment earlier about, you know, why don't we have option B, C, and D? We actually looked at a number of different options for how to accommodate this growth early on within that phase one process. So we took all that information. We said where we were going to be able to meet the targets or were not, made adjustments, regularly provided updates to Planning Commission and City Council. We met with an advisory group that also provided guidance throughout this process to, you know, develop those scenarios and make sure that we were, you know, aligning with what we were hearing. And we also developed a series of guiding principles that are front and center within the document that really led us to the draft Future Land Use Map that's in front of you tonight. Next slide. So the the other, the element that we now we I've shown these slides a few times. One of the components that we use is we use a scenario planning tool called Urban Footprint. And that helps us identify, you know, from a capacity standpoint and what we understand could occur from a developability and building type component. What is the actual capacity for residential of different types and employment types? And so we used the base analysis from the Buildable Lands Report from 2021 amended to incorporate the already developed or permitted projects that have occurred since 2021, so essentially taking credit for that information, but also ensuring that we don't consider that as developable again. So those parcels were removed from the scenario planning tool and accounted for in those in those developed, in those residences that were already considered planned or developed. And then we started applying different development types based on what the community told us they wanted to see within specific areas. Downtown, they wanted to see more housing. They wanted to see more services. Neighborhood-oriented commercial in areas along Main Street, the triangle near Strawberry Lane, that was also an area that was identified as potentially a location where you could add employment as well as residential adjacent to a large medical facility, knowing that 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 medical facility will continue to grow. So those elements and those inputs essentially created the scenarios, and that's how we got some of those base numbers. And we reviewed those with you back in October and November of 2023. And we agreed that as we started to think about those scenarios, we combined them into a single scenario to assess in the supplemental environmental impact statement that Kate talked about. So that was later in 2023 that set us up for this year, early 2024, to do that environmental analysis. Next slide. So with that, you know, with the environmental analysis, with the Buildable Lands inventory, with what the community was telling us in terms of, you know, kind of desired urban form and where they wanted development to see, we started to develop a draft Future Land Use Map. And you can see that this is kind of bubbly, you know, in terms of like where growth would occur, what types of growth would occur. But this is essentially a discussion point, both within the environmental impact statement through the advisory group, and then also through some of the phase two community engagement where we asked for input on, did we get this right? What are some of the elements that are either missing or we should add? And so we essentially use these maps to be able to have a discussion about, this is how all of the information is starting to align. What do we have that we need to change or we need to reconsider? How do we still meet those targets by but still aligning with what we're we're hearing from the community about those guiding principles to to move forward over the next several years? Excellent. And so that's exactly what we did. Again, we did another round of pop-ups that the the city led through a number of your existing events that you have throughout the city in the summer. We had an in-person meeting that actually looked at a series of trade-offs for the the growth alternative, what that looks like in terms of if we place growth here, what are some of those trade-offs that we might consider? Whether that's transportation or parks or the other environmental features. And then we also started to test some of the policy language online. And so people were able to provide online comments for some of the policies that were we were being developed to support the Future Land Use Map, but also provide written comments online for the Draft Future Land Use Map itself. And so that culminated all of the phase two public engagement through the end of summer. And then since then, we've been working to refine the Draft Future Land Use Map and the Comprehensive Plan to make sure that we're meeting commerce requirements for timelines so that we can get it reviewed and still adopt potentially by the end of this year, but also start to address comments that we're hearing, for example, tonight and in previous meetings. Excellent. And so that that brings us to where we are this evening. So if you look at the two comparisons, so the draft supplemental environmental impact statement, that action alternative, that is the map that I showed earlier. That's the map, the bubble diagrams, if you will, of where the community wanted to place growth to meet those targets, but also where they wanted to meet those guiding principles. How do we create a more walkable downtown? What are the varied housing choices that we we want to see within the city? What are the certain employment opportunities? How do we connect employment to to housing? And you'll see, you know, there have been changes since the draft SCIS was was submitted. You'll see along 154th, that mixed-use corridor has been removed. That was some out input from both the advisory group, the community, as well as Planning Commission and City Council. There have been some other minor changes to the plan or to the Future Land Use Map based on those comments. So we think we're getting closer. We think it's it's evolved based on the information that we've heard and what the community has told us. But that's where we're at tonight as we move forward into, you know, looking at the the document as a whole, moving forward. So with that, I think that's my last slide. Kate, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks. Staying on the slide, there is just one additional piece that I want to bring to your attention. There are some areas on the map that we are not recommending a change to the land use designation, but we have identified needing to change the zone, the zoning requirements. The biggest one is everything along US 2, that entire commercial corridor. We have talked about adding in the ability to add residential on top of commercial businesses. So it would be very similar to the Turney Place North Kelsey Subarea and overlay where you would primarily have your commercial, but it would allow you to have residential either above or behind that primary use. So that that doesn't change, that does not require a change to the Future Land Use Map, but it does mean we need to change our zoning code. The other areas that that would apply to, there were some comments that came in about the downtown commercial. It's got the correct designation, but we need to take another look at the zoning. How do we implement what we're hearing from the community and to achieve what we're hoping for housing and jobs? And then the final area that that comment came up was all of the mixed use that's along Main Street. So the final document that you will get, we're hoping to have it online next week with all of the edits, all of the comments that we've incorporated since the last, well, since the Planning Commission public hearing, the comments that have come in from the state, other reviewing agencies. That will be available on the city's website late next week. And so that that will be included in that land use. So you understand, it doesn't require a land use change in the plan, but we do have to do some more work on our zoning code. Next slide. Okay, so back to the the environmental review. The reason I wanted to have the slide, besides just giving you the timelines, is that after the planning committee, or excuse me, after the city council has held your public hearing, you have considered all of the things that we've been talking about from the Growth Management Act, the Vision 2050, the countywide planning policies, public engagement, public testimony, state agency comments. If the Planning Commission, or gosh, why actually I keep saying that? Sorry, I'm so used to them. If the city council says, you know, we think we can still meet our allocated 2044 housing and employment targets by removing some of these areas that have been of concern to the community, we want, we want staff to look into that. If that's the case, we would need to do an addendum for our final environmental impact statement. That would only take a handful of weeks, I think. And I'm still hopeful that you would be able to adopt your comprehensive plan by the end of this year. So I just, I wanted to touch on that because that is your choice. You have to make the hard choices. I believe in last week's conversation, or two weeks ago, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of time as well. There was questions about the capacity that was assigned to the Strawberry Lane neighborhood, questions about the properties on Chain Lake Road, and then the area identified on Roosevelt Road. We don't have capacity if you take them all out, but there might be some opportunity. And so I just want to be really clear, it's up to you. But we do need to do a little bit more work on the environmental document before you can take final action. Any questions?
So a question, then, if the council, so the council can't give direction tonight. That's what I understood from your presentation earlier, but after public testimony on the 12th.
Correct.
Good. Making certain the numbers are in my head. So after, after public testimony, then, on the 12th for the public hearing, if the council gives direction to remove something from the map or make adjustments to the map you brought forward, you feel that you would be able to complete the required environmental impact statement work and then have the final version of the ordinance to the council for consideration by when?
So the, can we go to the next slide?
Thanks.
That's okay. We're beginning, we're ending where we began. It's just an overview of the the last steps for our process. Your public hearing is on the 12th of November. Again, I had not planned on the council doing first reading of ordinance, but allowing you room to have conversation. Then on November 19th, I had hoped you'd be ready to give direction to staff to move forward with the draft ordinance or make revisions to that. If the council deems that we'd like to make a change, staff still needs to A confirm, yes, we can meet the capacity. And then we would direct our consultant team to help working, to begin working on the addendum. We think it would take a handful of weeks, so it should not mess up the schedule. If we cannot get it done on the 19th of November or the 3rd of 3rd of December, your very last meeting is December 10th. I honestly, if we go to that first meeting in January, I'm not very concerned. You're very close to getting the process done, but we just want to make you aware that there might be some time constraints or challenges. And we do do still need to confirm that all of the numbers that Alex has run through their modeling still shows that we can show to the state and the county and Pugis County Regional Council, we can accommodate what we have been asked to by 2044.
And just as a follow-up, this December 12th is the last scheduled meeting for the year. In the event that we just, the council decided not to want to wait till January, just to, you know, so that we are unquestionably in compliance with the December 31st, would we, if we needed to, would we be able to add a special meeting on the 17th for the council to consider taking action?
Oh, there is? Sorry.
Okay.
This is incorrect.
Okay, I couldn't remember. I had had previous conversations, the 10th or the 17th. And so you do have one more date there. And when you say a handful of weeks to me, where I was raised, a handful would be between three, would be between between three and six, so.
We're looking closer to three.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. So just turning to to council, do you have any questions this evening? And again, there will be an opportunity to hear from the public at the public hearing on the 12th and provide direction and everything and discussion accordingly. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Can you, at a previous meeting, we were pretty under on the the jobs figures. Is that still, are we still under on on those numbers? And if so, is that something that's that's still being worked out or or where are we at on that?
So the proposal that is in your draft comprehensive plan gets us to where we need to be. And you are remembering correctly, employment was more of a challenge than housing. But we have figured it out. And Alex, I don't know if you wanted to provide any more on that.
Now, I think the, from a a job standpoint, you know, the ways that we, you know, look to meet that was, you know, kind of thinking about how industrial lands are used and what some of the difference, different uses are starting to occur within those specific locations. But also really kind of taking a hard look at, you know, where mixed use was preferred by the community, but also where it could provide, you know, smaller scale retail, you know, in supportive of housing. And so some of that could be downtown. A lot of that is along Kelsey, and then also some of that along Main Street. So it's not a kind of single just kind of point where all these jobs would be. It's really kind of spread about throughout the city, mostly under existing zoning. As as Kate mentioned, or existing future land use classifications. Some of the zoning would need to be updated for that, but like for your industrial uses, they're assuming different assumptions for the types of jobs that would be within those those warehouse spaces.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Never mind. My question was answered. Thanks.
There any other questions from council? Okay, and and for the public that's here, understand this, that tonight was a presentation from the staff. As you can see from the schedule up above, your next opportunity to provide a public comment will be at the public hearing on the 12th. I do have a question for staff to look into. We've received public comment at a couple of meetings. And I'd like to know if the council can formally incorporate the public comments related to this into the record, if that's something that can be done. I feel like I've seen that done once before, and I I think that it's great if people want to come and speak again at a public hearing. I also want to to make certain if there's a way for the council to incorporate by reference public comments done in public comment versus public hearing into the record that that's something that we can do. So.
So we're, we're already doing that. Attachment 1D.
Okay.
Is it is all, it's not the public hearing. It is all the public comments that we have been receiving since the draft plan was put on the website and we started providing notice, please look at the document. It includes not only the public comments that we've been getting, written email that's been coming in. It also includes the comments we've received from Pugis County Regional Council, Department of Commerce, the Snoqualmie Tribe. We just got comments yesterday from the Department of Natural Resources. So all of that, the way that appendix is the cover sheet, is the agency, a summary of the comment, either how we accommodated it noted. And then beyond that, all the attachments are the actual emails or letters that we've been receiving.
Okay, so my my only reason for mentioning that is that I have been in a setting once before where comments from public comments from council meetings had to be incorporated into the record. It sounds like that's already being done as part of this process. And I may be thinking of a quasi judicial matter that I was involved in a a couple decades ago as a planner. So anyway, I just just wanted to float that out there, just in case the public comments were being captured the same way because they were done during public comments. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, so the 12th is the public hearing. The 19th, a week later, we have discussion amongst ourselves and the first reading of the ordinance that's prepared. However, is, will there be like multiple options for us to consider? Like usual, where you have option A, option B, option C, so that we can have a first reading of something that night or?
So just looking at that, at after the public hearing, I would like to add a discussion because staff needs guidance from you. If if you all are, there are not an option A, B, and C. There is an option. Based on the comments you are receiving, though, there is some flexibility. Not a lot, but there is some. So if the council, after considering everything, says, we really want you to remove this this designation change, then we know how to proceed, but you will not get three options. It it is the draft plan that is online today.
Thank you. That answers my question. So, okay.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the council? Anything else from staff?
Yes, totally spaced. My apologies. I just wanted to reiterate, I sent out an email response. We received two council questions. One was asking about if we had received information on doing a designation change that would be followed by, if approved, would be followed by a citywide rezone. The assessor's office got back to us and just at high level, their actual email I included in the email. But the high level is just with a designation change, they will not automatically see a change in their property values. That would happen over time if properties are sold and developed differently. The second question was, there was a, an idea to consider changing the land use designation and zoning in the tourist commercial zone to something like mixed use. That does not help us. The tourist commercial actually has a pretty high employment count. We may have a deficiency as you've been kept up to speed on the PUD, potentially purchasing the first airfield. There was a high number of employment there that if that moves forward, we will not have that same capacity. So I, I want to just let you know, we did respond to that. A like-for-like for commercial to commercial, does it help us? And the idea of the mixed use is Alex was talking about, is it helps us achieve two things. Meet the employment, the employment targets, but also looking at the different housing types that we need to hit the numbers by income band. So those are the two questions. I just want to make sure that was on the record tonight. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other follow-up? Councilmember Walker?
The response from the assessor's, assessor's office, it was along the lines of existing single-family, for example, single-family residential units within the area that might have a zoning change are not going to see a difference in their assessed value type. So in other words, they're not going to become assessed on a commercial basis until or unless there was a change in use type, right? I think he said we, we assess by use. So until a, a house is redeveloped into retail or, is, is that right?
Yeah, and I did see the, your additional follow-up questions. I have not sent that out, but their specific response was values change, value changes would occur once development starts and the properties are platted, et cetera. We value the present use of the affected properties, so as is. If the project resulted in a separate part, if the project resulted in separate parcels for each, for example, townhomes, then the residential division of the assessor's office would do the assessment if it is a multi-family. Because I asked two questions. One, would it change, and two, who would oversee? The second one is if a project is a multi-family, then that's actually in the commercial. But that, that first part was the most important. We value the present use of the affected properties. I will follow up, though, with your specific questions tomorrow.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I, I found that really reassuring or, or good news that when we, when something is rezoned, it's not like overnight, you've got a different assessment. So yeah, thank you for following up on that. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Ask one other follow-up question. We heard tonight some public comments about non-conformities. Could we make certain the council gets clarification as to whether an existing detached residential unit would be considered legally non-conforming and therefore couldn't be expanded or anything like that? So just some, some clarity on that, I think would be helpful, too.
Yeah, and I apologize. I, I was going to bring that because this city is extremely liberal and what it allows for existing residential structures, if they get, if they're in a zone that changes, I will bring that back to you in the future. It does allow for expansion, which is kind of unheard of. So I want to make sure I'm giving you the correct information. I will have that. I might just email that to you so you have it before the public hearing.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council this evening? All right. Again, I thank everybody from the public who are here. I'm sure we'll see a number of you on the 12th of November. I ask that everybody have a safe rest of your week and the next couple of weeks. And thank you all for your service and thank you all for coming this evening. We're adjourned, unless there's objection, we're adjourned. There being none, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.